Hello and welcome to day 5 of Immersion RPG
Day 5, day 5, day 5
I'm still digging and Seg is dumb, what are you doing?
I'm, I'm none of your business, you'll find out.
You're not, well you are, eh, oh what the hell is, I've managed to stumble upon, across a mineshaft, there's an undead miner come here crawling out of my hole.
Hello friends, I am Cedrigo. And this is Adventure Mult- oh, damn it.
Not Adventure Multiplex.
This is, this is, this is Divine RPG. My brain's in a bad place right now. In that bad place.
Oh!
Well, that was quick.
Yeah, we're like-
We're off to a fit- what kind of mining are you doing?
Um, I was trying to go down the ladder and I fell down the ladder.
Yeah, you died in your own friggin' house, I'm over here like worried for my life if I die.
Yeah, I kinda fell down my ladder, that's the only reason I died.
I'm here too.
No you're not.
You haven't even said anything, speak up woman.
If that is your real name.
I have no words.
Taking a small moment, um, away from all of the dangers of my cave, just to do a little bit of mining. So that's what's going on over here.
Yeah, I'm doing a little bit of mining too, mining down here in my facility.
Because am I.
One of sixteen platforms cleared.
Who cares?
I care.
Eww!
One of sixteen platforms.
Not platforms, anything but platforms. I'm so intrigued by what you're saying right now.
Well, not like you're saying anything anymore interesting.
I am having a-
I'd like to hear you talk about quantum physics over there, but you're not. You're talking about noises, you are making the noises and demonstrating noises to the crowd.
Quantum physics?
Yes, quantum physics.
And now I'm just confused.
Are you confused? I asked you about quantum physics.
I'm not quite sure I understand why you're talking about quantum physics.
Cause quantum physics are amazing, that's why.
Prepare your anus for my wrath?
Yeah, you could tunnel in my tunnel. Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
You should come take a tour of my tunnel.
Hey, you're just- Stop approaching me.
No, I like my tunnel. Yeah? Yeah?
Thank you friend, oh dad.
Shut- Why?
Shut up.
Why?
Nobody likes you.
Everybody likes my tunnel though, everybody comes to explore my tunnel.
It's true, I do like your tunnel.
Yeah, I don't like your tunnel cause it's so open.
Ohhh.
At least I give the public joy and fun, they enjoy exploring my tunnel and all it has to offer to them unlike you.
But see, I like more private, just monogamous.
I'm sure the people of your tunnel are just ecstatic right now.
That's, that's how I enjoy my tunnel before.
I do private parties.
Uh, no, that's not monogam- that's not monogamous, that's just private.
Oh no, no, I-
I don't care about being private, I care about, uh, you know, only exploring one tunnel at a time.
Well, that's, that's okay, I let, I let dozens of people explore my tunnel at once.
No one's ever been in your tunnel, why you lie to yourself?
You are not talking about that tunnel.
No, see there are, uh, local villagers that I cater to, they often set up, uh-
Casey's a prostitute.
Oh, that makes sense. Hooray for-
I was talking about monogamous tunnels.
Yeah, we were, we were on that subject long.
And I'm over here like, I don't get it. Hooray for whatever you talk about, here we go.
He is toned out.
Yeah.
I have, I'm focusing on something a little bit more important right now.
The monogamy, what could be more important, I guess, uh, Seg's just a little tunnel type guy.
Yeah, we, we don't do one tunnel here, we're working on sixteen at once.
I do have two tunnels.
Well, we've got sixteen, so I, I think we had to do-
I'm just saying, I'm, I've got two tunnels.
Oh, well your two tunnels aren't gonna stand. Dig, 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 dig. This is ver- I don't feel like this is a very productive way for looking for stuff.
I'm not even looking for things, I was just so frustrated last session that I don't even wanna fight anything anymore.
I know, you're just like, arrr, anger, anger, anger.
I just wanna be, I just wanna be left alone in peace to dig some holes.
I did, I kind of realized, uh, there is a way to keep things from spawning in tunnels.
What? Well, yeah, you can confine the space.
No, cover everything in half slabs.
Oh yeah, oh yeah, I'm gonna totally do, the whole reason I made that tunnel was to make friggin' monsters spawn.
I'm just saying, if you come down here, everything is covered in half slabs. There are only four blocks down here that are not covered in half slabs.
Oh really, right now?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know you were doing that, that's cool.
Doing what? Covering stuff in half slabs?
Yeah.
Okay.
Why are you digging in a tunnel?
Because I'm digging a tunnel.
Like what is your, what is your purpose to this community? Like what purpose are you serving?
I am serving a very honorable purpose, good sir.
Like how are you benefiting us?
By providing lots of cobblestone.
All this cobblestone here, it's gonna keep us warm through the winter. You smell like anus.
Your anus smells like roses.
I didn't like that.
Oh, no, there went my pick, my pick just broke.
What do I do with this? My main goal is not to get lost right now.
Oh, Jesus, I fell again, I keep falling.
See, it doesn't even really matter what I do at this point because, oh, because my head's always coming out.
I'm doing some pretty, doing some pretty crazy stuff over here.
I am too, I'm digging my fourth, uh, fourth tunnel.
No man, I'm taking it to a whole new level over here, you have no idea.
Oh, I mean my third, no, my third. What are you doing over there?
What I'm doing is beyond crazy.
What is it?
I'm also digging, well, sort of, I'm exploring.
What you looking for?
Um, ore, just ore.
More arlemite?
Eh. Something with anite.
Uh, realmite?
Eh.
Pearlite, i- i- darkite?
Pearlite?
Yes, pearlite.
I'm divorcing you.
You know what?
I'm divorcing you, no, I wanna divorce, quote Dane Cook.
What?
Quote Dane Cook.
I don't know who Dane Cook is.
You're like, what? What?
I do not know who that is.
He's the inventor of bad comedy.
Ah, no wonder. I've heard his name a lot of times, but I don't know who he is.
He's just a comedian.
According to Family Guy, all his jokes include him saying stupid things and waving his arms around.
That is, he's very overdramatic and I think it's funny.
Well, it, it's kinda like Queen Latifah, I hear her-
What?
I hear her name a lot, but I don't know who she is.
Excuse me?
She's a, she's a black actress.
I know who, I know that much, but beyond being a black actress, Queen Latifah might as well be a queen of Cuba.
She was in movies that weren't great.
She was, she played in Hairspray, she played in Hairspray, I know that too.
Did you see Hairspray?
Uh... Uh, I walked in on-
Not going that way, not going that way, no!
Aw, what's a wildfire?
Son of a-
Oh, you're in the nether.
Damn it!
You are in the nether. You're doing that kinda mining.
Yeah, I was really hoping that wouldn't happen.
Why didn't you want us to know you were in the nether?
Cause I wanted to look for something real quick.
You're looking for those ores?
No, I wanted to do something funny. You ruined it with your fun.
No, you ruined it by being weak.
Dirk.
Excuse me? Um, I died in one shot.
Yeah, exactly, you're weak.
Like I had no, like, I knew it was gonna happen the moment I saw the damn thing, and I hid, I was building a barrier and everything, bam, in the face. My only hope is-
That's okay, last time we played, we lost everything twice, thousand times, and it was not-
Oh, it was awful. I like how it's called quickly, you're like, oh, you're in the nether.
Yeah, I was trying to remember what, I knew, uh, wildfire was a mob, it just took me a while to realize-
It's just the worst mob you could possibly find in the nether and it was the, like, one of the first ones I saw. I was like, what is that? Should I probably not be here? Yep.
Where'd you put your portal at?
None of your business.
Aw, I'll have to build my own then.
Well, if you find it, it's down in my caves, you can find it, you can come help me, I don't really need help. Now my plan has changed a little bit.
Well, whatever you're doing, just be safe and wear a condom.
Yo, thank you friend.
That's a homicidal condom.
Yes. Well, actually, I should give you the condom and put on the wildfires before they, you know.
Why are you still here?
Right there, right there.
He was literally still in there.
Was he wearing a condom?
No, he's being an asshole.
Aw, you gotta get yourself checked for AIDS.
No, you, you were the asshole.
No, I'm dead.
Well, maybe, maybe he's got a fetish for, uh, dead things then.
Like, you think I was far enough away to despawn? But nooo, yep, I'm pretty sure I just lost all my stuff.
You should, uh, get it all back.
I can't, there's a wildfire, like, nothing I can do to stop him. Oh my god, are you serious?
That's how it went down last time.
My cave is now filled with friggin' hell spiders.
Did they come through the portal?
No, there, further into my area, yep.
Would you like my ruby sword?
No, I'm, 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 I'm almost done, like, I lost everything. There's nothing I can do to get it back. Huh?
Don't rage quit on us.
I don't have to rage quit, there's nothing I can do.
Well, you could take my ruby sword and beat the hell out of everything.
I have a diamond sword, but it's not gonna matter, they have too much HP. That's what my friggin' bowhead anchor was for, I died in one hit.
Well.
See, I was digging underground so I could avoid all the monsters.
Well, how'd the wildfire come to be?
I dug into a cave.
Well.
It was the first monster that was there. This was the worst thing that could have happened to me right now.
Worst thing that could happen to me right now is my pick could break.
She's like, oh no, not my pick.
Of course-
Hallelujah, hallel friggin' luja, hallelujah, hallelujah.
You got your stuff?
Yep.
Oh good.
Everything, oh, oh, at least a good ten stacks of, of, of netherack that I was trying to get back.
What do you need all that netherack?
I don't, I was joking.
Ow.
You think I would ever need any red, this much netherack in my life, this is driving me mad.
I was, I was a little bit confused as to why the hell you need that much netherack, but-
I don't. I just wish iron armor was better.
Oh my god, make some realmite dude.
I can't!
I'll go hunt for some realmite.
Spend another friggin' episode sitting inside that cave. That's why I'm in the nether right now, I just found some blood friggin', um, some blood gems if you guys want some.
Um, I don't know what-
Make a pretty shazzy sword with it, wait, hold on.
What is it, the blood gem sword or something?
Yeah, it gives you nine melee damage and it has infinite uses.
No, thank you.
It's pretty good, better than diamond.
Yeah, I'd rather build myself a bedrock sword or get a bowhead anchor.
How would you ever build a bedrock sword?
You can make bedrock.
Yeah.
Oh, you can, what? Wha- 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 what?
Yeah, it's like rupees and obsidian.
Yeah, the only bad thing about that is if one of us placed the bedrock by accident, you know-
You can never get it.
Yep.
Wait. It doesn't say it on here, oh, there's a bedrock, wow, that's funny, you can actually craft bedrock now.
Yep.
Wow, that's hilarious. If you wanna build a bedrock sword.
You can make yourself a bedrock house.
Dude, that'd be the worst idea ever. Oh my god, one misplaced block would piss me off for the rest of my life. I don't think my framerate's gonna handle that kinda stress.
I don't know, about the worst thi- actually, I lied, about the worst thing that could happen to me right now is, um, every last one of my stone slabs could be completely negated and thousands of mobs start spawning down here, instantly screw me over.
They're like, boo hoo, hello?
Yeah, I'd never get out of here alive.
Time to party, don't push your limits.
Mine?
No, I'm talking to Seg.
Oh.
Not worth it, not worth it, I don't even know, I don't even know if it's up there. But it's not gonna be friendly.
Hey, what's this, a ruby ore? That is ruby ore.
Scared the crap out of me. Oh.
What'd you encounter?
A health, a fucking wildfire. Oh my god, I zoomed in.
How did you zoom in?
No, like, I clicked Z, like, out of pure panic.
Oh.
And, uh, like, I saw stuff on my minimap, I didn't know if it was in the cave next to me and it just kind of appeared in a fl- frame and I just mashed. I'm gonna try to dig around it.
What the hell's in there?
Oh, I thought I actually found my way up at first, I did.
Oh, it's an eye.
I remember when I used to fight those, that was to- that was so day four.
Well, that was, this is just a random dungeon, what do I got, a saddle and some wheat?
Yeah, I definitely have, um, some netherite despair, or some netherack. Thank god for the minimap, the nether would be awful. Like, no, seriously, god, thank you for making the minimap.
I have a feeling it was Ray that made the minimap, but, sure.
But god made Ray.
I suppose.
His parents made Ray. Okay, bad idea.
By extension, Stewie made Ray.
What?
Stewie made the universe.
And now you're just high.
No, I watched Family Guy.
Oh, that's Stewie.
Yeah.
I don't get the reference.
Stewie created the universe, so without Stewie, the universe wouldn't exist. But without the universe, therefore, Stewie wouldn't exist, it's a paradox.
Two nether, I see some netherack over, netherite over there, on the floor, but a red question mark, very close to it.
Probably not worth it.
No, I think it is, adventure. Hey man, this is adventure craft, I've said it before, okay, it's a bad time to lag lava, it's a lava lag.
Sounds like, more like death craft. I am lagging, nope, yep, nope, yep, yep, okay, hey, I found a lava pit.
Like, I seriously only need one netherite.
What do you need netherite for, huh? Mister super secret, top secret secret man?
I, what do you, I mean, that's one of the main steps in, taking damage, the netherite damaged me, okay, that's scary. I was all of a sudden taking-
That's not there to damage you.
Step on, I don't know, it's hot, it's friggin' metal, that's been sitting in the nether.
I've never taken damage from netherite.
When's the last time you played?
When we did our server?
How do you remember?
Because I was mining netherite. It's, right before we got brutally murdered.
Well, I hate to break it to you, but I just took damage from stepping on it.
Well, I never stepped on it, so, you know what? That is my legitimate excuse, I never stepped on it.
There's a monster over there. Oh, it's a hellfire.
There's some arlemite down there.
Into the portal, into the portal!
Like emeralds, no, that doesn't.
But there are things down there that I don't know.
Hey, um-
What?
Hey, in case I send you a, um, a parcel in a few days filled with, um, about twenty stacks of netherite, or netherack. It's from a friend, just assume it was from me. I have no coal.
I have, I have coal.
Yeah, I'll just use wood.
You should make charcoal.
Ha!
Good bit.
Yeah, okay, I'll do, I'll do that, that'll make even more interesting recording.
Yes, no, so just be-
I don't snore.
Not all the time.
Ohhh.
But I was waking some weird noises last night, so I woke myself-
You know it's a good night's sleep when-
Well, no, like, I don't know, I woke up a few times, like, towards morning, like, with crap in my throat. Not literal crap, but like, you know, mucus and stuff.
Well hopefully.
And it was like making me go, buuuh! Like wake, the noise would wake me up and then I would start like coughing violently.
Lovely.
Yeah, I'm not similar, but... But like, I'm wheezing and stuff because there's still stuff in my lungs. And I think I just haven't recovered yet because of the weather.
I don't know why, but I keep finding random patches of cobblestone.
Friends, I'm calling a town meeting.
Town meeting?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Everybody, we need to meet at Vixen's house.
Okay, well, I will stand on my roof and, uh, wait for people.
Alright, oh, it's nighttime, we should probably wait till it's day. I should probably slept while I was down there.
Probably, no, no, stop, my debut key stopped working.
Okay, I'm going back down to go sleep. I mur- I was murdered three times in the nether.
Oh my god.
Give me a break.
So many spiders here, oh my god, spider city.
Now I have to delve back down into the depths of my cave.
My home is spider city.
Oh yes, the depths of hell.
It was bad.
Go away spider! I saw that thing on my minimap and I still screamed when it jumped on my head.
Go away spider!
Chicken-
Really?
Like spiders.
What?
There's drumkicks surrounding my bed. Everything is so difficult in this friggin' mod pack, I hate it. Like, I can't just go to bed, I have to fight before I go to bed, and now there's an eye after me. I can't even see it. Okay, I'm in bed.
Just sit down and treat.
Go to bed quick.
Oh, there's a cobra outside your house.
Yeah, please don't blow it up.
No, I'm not that close to your house, I just see it on-
Well, she's not gonna be in bed for a while, she's over visiting, we're having tea.
Oh my gosh, I told you!
Get that door right now, shut up, god!
Are you in bed?
Alright.
See, now we're just waiting on Vixen.
No, Vixen's in bed too.
Vixy?
No, no, Vixy's in bed, see?
Vixy poof.
No, Vixy's in bed, see?
It's daytime and I'm still blind by the way.
Yeah, you haven't killed the thing.
Oh, it just despawned, thank god, hey, alright, town meeting! Alright, before you come up, um, I would like one of you to volunteer to take off, uh, to put away every item in your inventory.
Um-
We just wanna test weapons and crap.
No, no, trust me.
I don't.
Just, just trust me, it'll be amazing.
I have a chest to repair.
Just, just trust me.
I seriously have a chest to repair.
Please? It'll be fun, we can all have an adventure together.
I'm still trying to reclaim all of my items. My chest loaded.
Guys, I'm, I'm, I'm having, I wanna sh- I wanna, I wanna show you a toy I made. Nami.
What?
Nami.
What? I'm not part of the town meeting.
Oh, you have to be. You're, 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 we have three people in the town, we're three people that exist in this universe. And you're not gonna participate in the damn town meeting.
Oh, I see, I'm in my house cooking eggs.
This is heresy.
I'm cooking eggs!
The town meeting, I've changed the town meeting now, our town meeting is to make the town only two people. Guys, I'm super excited for the town meeting, no one wants to participate.
Trying to repair my house, I had a disaster strike and I don't-
I'm waiting for the meeting to actually begin.
I, yeah, the, there's a prerequisite for the meeting, like I said. One person, one person has to have a completely empty inventory.
I do not have a completely empty inventory.
And that person will have the most interesting, um, interesting day of us all. Hey.
Hi friend.
Hey.
There aren't any birch trees around here.
No, but there is town meeting if you wanna come to it.
I shall come to this town meeting.
If, you make it sound very optional.
No, it is not optional, it is something that we all have to participate in, trust me.
Oh, you said if.
Alright, I'm coming, I'm coming, I'm coming.
I noticed you're still wearing pants.
Oh yeah.
We should have this meeting in my basement.
No, that is, that is not an option.
I lost all my arm, my freaking testes.
Uh, no, no, the basement's not an option, it has to be outdoors.
Why does it have to be outdoors?
Yeah, you'll find out when the town meeting happens, golly, ask too many questions.
Hello?
Town meeting?
Oops.
Town meeting?
My house is almost repaired, hold on.
I'm waiting for it to begin.
I'm waiting for you guys to come up here.
I was up here.
Are your inventory completely clear?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Shame it wasn't Vixen.
That's okay.
Alright, come on up.
I'm terrified that I will die.
Well, that was the point.
Yeah, see, no, thank you.
I guess maybe it should be somebody who's recording.
I know, that's why I wanted-
Alright, well then I won't, I'm leaving, goodbye.
Oh, this town meeting.
No, kill her, murder her, she shall be the sacrifice.
I'm beating down a cyclops with my bare hands.
Reward companionship, twenty-nine corrupted shards, huh?
Yes.
I have four, I have some more downstairs.
Yes.
Oh, um, Nomers are capeclopsism, Nomers? No, what are you doing?
Have fun with it.
He ain't gonna come after us. Making this town meeting difficult.
I heard sheep around here somewhere.
Stand back, stand back, I'm bowhead anchoring him, you don't wanna, you don't wanna repeat of last time. Please don't, please don't, you scared me so much. You scared me so much, I was so scared.
You know, I don't even-
Go, go away, you're behind me, I know it.
I don't even see your bullets.
Really? Yeah, it's cause they're too awesome to be visible.
He's not even attacking anymore.
Yeah, he's, he's begging for mercy and I'm not allowing it.
Oh, now, now Vixen is fighting one.
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
I would like to fi- I would like this town meeting to commence.
Ow, give me the golden get.
Don't hit me.
Please?
What are you gonna do for it?
Beat you down with my ruby savior?
Why would you do that?
Because?
And, um, alright, I'll just, um-
Thank you.
I'm going off to have fun by myself.
Well, are we done then?
I wanted the friggin' meeting, you guys won't get ready.
I was waiting there!
No, you guys were friggin' fighting, you just killed you.
I was just, I did, was not fighting, I was still standing, no, yes, because I quit afterwards, I'm back.
I went through three chickens waiting for you guys. That was my backup chicken. And that's good chicken hunting.
Alright, the town meeting must occur atop my boat.
Come around, come around here.
Up here.
No, no, try, you will, cause I know what's about to happen.
Alright, fine, mister fancy pants, do whatever the fuck you fancy gonna do.
Okay, come here, Nomers.
What?
Come here!
Yeah.
I'm gonna take this seat-
You're playing this game, you're not watching.
There you go.
Hello friends, does anybody know what this is?
Yes, that is a bull.
Oh, it's a friggin' clock.
It's a bull.
It's one of the thingies that's supposed to teleport you to places.
Here, Nomers, do you have nothing in your inventory, cause-
Yes, I have nothing in my-
Vixen still has armor on.
Yeah.
Oh crap, I could take off my armor, I didn't realize I had my armor.
Don't you have, like, built a core for it?
Oh, I want you to, I want you to take this clock from me.
Yeah, okay.
Cause the clock, this clock is a mysterious clock, clocks have mysterious purposes, they do mysterious things. I would like you to take this clock and I would like you to right-click something as soon as not, uh, Vixen gets back.
Okay.
It is, it is a mysterious clock and it is mysterious in its purposes.
I've got a score.
Here, take the mysterious clock. Take the mysterious clock.
Hello, ancient entity.
And there is the first boss of the game. Really?
I'm punching his foot, I'm punching his foot.
Oh, you're one heck of an adventurer, okay, he's stuck in the tree, this is actually really good, um- If he's stuck in the tree here, take my maul, take my maul.
Okay, I wanna-
Take my maul, we can, we can fight him, I'm gonna fight him with the bowhead anchor back here, alright, cause we can, um, we get a really good sword from killing him and we get divine shards.
I'm gonna hurt him, he's stuck in a tree.
Oh my gosh, don't get too close, he will throw you a thousand feet in the air.
I wanna be a thousand feet in the air.
No you don't, you will die.
I know I will die.
I'm sitting here shooting him, oh, please don't be free from the tree, that would be horrible.
This is fun.
I know, look at this guy.
He's dying. Am I actually hitting him? I can't even tell if I'm hitting him, or if it's you hitting him.
I'm hitting him too, I'm, I'm-
I know, I can't tell if I'm actually doing damage to him.
No, you're not.
No, I'm not.
There you go.
Oh wow, all these hits that I've been trying to make aren't actually hits, what the hell?
He's aggroed on you, here, let's just shoot him a little bit.
Wait, wait, stop shooting him, I'm trying to find a spot, where's his hitbox?
It's, it's under his, it's like near his feet dude. You don't wanna get too close to him, okay, there, you damaged him a little bit.
I don't know where his hitbox is.
I'm hitting him.
Where the hell are you shooting?